I got like five in line now. Good, great. He's already at his number one.
It is.
Mine is still top. Okay, I don't see that. I have two from same time. One of them was filled and now it's like a back four. They say one of them is on to their top.
We, I don't know if I told you, we want both of those.
You said that.
I'm an old man. Well, no, I would have been, I struggled with the order because of the arm. I was deciding whether to switch or not. That's a good thing they were like, no, we're paying more than. They, they wrote little books they know pretty well.
Yeah, right.
They, I think they were telling him. It's good stuff.
They had their thing on there.
That's a great idea.
Maybe you really deserve my word.
She was fighting not by that. Get you off of her.
I'm down to date and see what I can do.
Five, four, three, two, one. That's correct. It is. You called the order? No, I won't call it. Here? Here. Here. Let's shoot a flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands as one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all. Melissa emailed and mentioned out there is a motion. Someone might do so. I would go to a food. I know everybody's trying to do it. It's like, second, you'll call with you. Hi. 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 Okay. We are, as visitors in communication portion of the meeting, would anyone like to address council? Come on up, state your name and address for the record and counsel if you'd like to say.
My name is Nita Tom. I'm a senior candidate for the eighteen hundred.
Okay.
I came up all the way here about this council debate. But it's not much of a big, small town discussion. I'm trying to introduce myself, but you know, very excited.
Great. That's great to see people involved. We need to do that. We'll see about some young people on this city council. But I think we really need younger people. In fact, I have a certain amount of people who are new to the city here. They all refer to me as council. It's a good idea. Do you guys part of the people?
I am.
I did that a long time ago. You're going to be doing hard?
I'm not sure.
I'm not sure.
Do you have a word or no?
When is it?
October four.
I'm sorry, I didn't get it. I didn't see it. Did you want me there? Oh, okay. Well, okay.
Thank you.
Excellent. Anything else?
I'm busy.
I think you've answered me in here. Would anyone else like to address council? Okay, will you move down to the folks' office or do you want to report?
Chief Bailey, thank you, Mayor Austin, members of council. One thing I really wanted to mention, I don't have anything per se as to the report that was mailed out yet. But at the end, obviously, it's always been a few questions that you might have. I want to mention that tomorrow at nine a.m. there's going to be a hazardous materials drill at the water district. We basically are not involved, but I will be down there to represent the city and talk to Mr. Dale and between myself and Chief Bailey. It's a, it's a hazardous materials drill put on by the National Guard. It's their drill. The Campbell County Office of Emergency Management will be there because they'll get some credit for the drill. So we're going to go down and assist them with what they need. Talk to Brad Murphy from the water district, that's our safety contact down there. He's kind of coordinated that with the National Guard. The reason I draw your attention to it is that at the waterworks plant, they'll be down there probably from before nine until probably way into the evening. They've got that place reserved, a section of that for a while. So, you know, I told them that Fort Thomas is a community that a lot of people see things and call, they call, et cetera. So I asked Brad, I didn't see it, I don't know if anybody here from the paper tonight, but I asked Brad to get a hold of him and put something in the paper where I never see the article, but I could have missed it. But basically, I just wanted everybody to understand that there's some stuff going on down there, some drill activity, just in case people see that, they'll know exactly what's going on. Feel free to call fire department. I'll be down for what Campbell County O M needs and then we'll be, we'll be kind of out of there and kind of monitoring it. So that's really the only thing I wanted to draw your attention to after talking to Mr. Dale. I'll be glad if you have any questions during the end of the report that was mailed out.
Any questions? Luke, to Chief Bailey. Good day. You want to call with you?
Mr. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Beadle. Mr. Johnson.
Hi. Excellent. Thank you. Now Police Department, Police Department.
Mayor of Austin, thank you council members. I do not have anything to comment on in the progress of the report. I just wanted to update everybody on the tally accident that we had this past Saturday night. It occurred around one o'clock and we had a vehicle start on South, on South Grand. It went off the roadway near the top of Greenwood and started trading in front yard there. The driver was forty-five years old from Dayton, Kentucky. There were little passengers in the car and the driver was pronounced dead at the scene by the coroner. The accident is under investigation at this time and obviously the road waiting under is almost pure. We need blood tests as far as any possible involvement of alcohol or any type of drugs. I did have some discussions today with some citizens that live in Fort Thomas. They live on Grand Avenue and I think they're going to approach council at the next month or year. They just have some concerns just because of this accident and I think the near misses in the past with, you know, the speed of cars trailing on Grand Avenue. We're working with them, trying to come up with ideas, possible solutions as far as stationary radar or moving radar on Grand Avenue. It's kind of a tricky road because there's not a lot of spots for stationary radar just because it's such a windy road. But we're looking at some other tools that we have within the police department that we can look at, some, you know, studies of survey of the speed. Look at the north part of Grand and look at the south part of Grand and kind of break it up that way. Some ideas that the citizens are talking about, they mentioned, obviously, the reduction of the speed limit. Obviously, it's a state route. But one idea that did come up that was mentioned to me, I think it's something that the city researched a few years back, was the idea of reducing Grand Avenue from four lanes down to two lanes. That's all I had for human production. I tried to answer them to you. And John supports that idea about parking on Grand Avenue.
We, um, I don't recall it exactly, but I can tell you where the drill is. Probably about ten or twelve years ago, the city presented that study and worked with partner transportation officials, the chief reference city as a state route. And actually, you know, put some research into developing a plan with, um, how many theaters to look at some traffic side with it on, um, but actually some face mapping that was done. There was some conceptual, um, design drawings that were created. So those still exist and it was centering on the idea, as the chief indicated, primarily, um, a couple of things. One was education at four lanes to two lanes. Obviously, the width of the street would, if that occurred, would create a lot of excess width availability for parking and creating straight lanes out somewhere and all type of.
White lanes or weak white lanes as a possibility.
Bill was actually a public media contractor here in this room. And all the stakeholders moving on his own property and button were specifically in the body for that media. And then the community of our county, so they could participate as well. And it was, it was a pretty good act for our input. A number of people in input that presented that, you think. But the resulting precision of council at the time, I mean, and it wasn't unanimous in terms of the comments or events, but there were, there were a significant number of opposed people to come with regard to making a type of change. There were certainly challenges that were still outstanding, but then transportation department is not going to go into that and say, we will reduce the speed limit. And they wouldn't say that, I thought, that they would commit to, if they studied the issue based on, you know, a particular plan. But of course, it's now presented in that form. Council decided not to pursue it at that time and further than that initial public hearing. So it depends on the shelf. It's actually something that we talked about in the house a couple of years ago. In fact, we do this with OnSaf and we pull all of it to make now. We still have it available in the building. Personally, I like the concept. I think it has a lot of traffic features to the potential that it could provide. Obviously, the on-street parking, perhaps the ability to lower the speed limit, perhaps the ability to lessen the, or return the road.
By planes. I'm getting there. Obviously, the by planes. And it presented some opportunities with by planes.
There's a lot of funding that's available centered around potential for by planes, for example. Share the road and then certainly the work that I got from T U will allow for that possibility. More so on Grand, incorporated the design and ways and the other streets that can happen in our community. So those are all possibilities, I think. I mean, with such a good head and some legalizing of its huge planning, obviously, something like that is a pretty good step, but it potentially could come to a lot of other things. And we talked about transportation element, whether that pedestrian, bikes, vehicle movement, pedestrian vehicle conflict.
It's a lot of, we're moving on to our future.
Well, you know, yeah, that was considered, it came as well. I mean, certainly, the potential to affect property values and I don't have to think that on-street parking would be a big option in that sense. And I would point out at the time of that study, and I think the chief referenced that once, you know, that, that study involved South Side Avenue. I don't think that same concept would cater for it on the north side. It's a different, you know, of traffic count and distribution of movement areas. It was a little bit different than the South Side Avenue. The study area involved from that point to protect it south, but.
And if it were, if it did sense of the parking on that section of Grand Avenue, I would assume that D M T would reduce the speed limit out of that circumstance. You know, they might not be able to thirty-five as part of our teams.
And yet, they would have to prove anything, so hopefully that would really be good big item there.
But wouldn't sense if they didn't find it.
Um, you know, you logically think that those two are connected, but, you know, another line of things in, in a view from, you know, we're talking about, you know, some of the functionality as, as a residential neighborhood, but when, you know, the apartment has, you know, a large scale, you know, and, and within the district, and they're designing a drill in New York surrounding like a moving vehicle, so that's what they provide. And so that's kind of the first thing, you know, cities kind of think then and say, we want to back up speed limit, we want to reduce limits, it's all coming in our communities. It's kind of contrary to their overall first, you know, charge, if you will. So we do some speed limits, this is going to necessarily be a first, you know, option, and they look at their road. Now, another option that we didn't present, discussed at the time, you know, is, you know, could it be transferred over and become a local street? And then you have a, let's say, obviously, you have the use and you're going to feel what it is. Obviously, that's an asset if it comes to those responsibility that may continue movements that we don't currently have. So it would be, you know, considering based on, you know, that factor, certainly give the city more of a flexibility in how they design and the speed limits and those type of things would back them up. And that's anyway, give it up. I think that is an opportunity to facilitate those things.
Good discussion. That was part of the police report, right? Are there any council questions? Can you make a motion?
Could I make a comment on that as far as that traffic grid animal?
Sure.
Good for him. Was at my parents' house on Holly Lane, which is right off that section of the ground. I was one of the more active that he could ask of suppliers, those fine people up in the meeting at that time. And I pointed out a number of the, it is a danger of the people that have the plots, that they have a little bit more room maybe. But among the things were brought up was, like, they said, well, it would be safer, you know, loading, unloading my children from the car. Well, who wants to unload their kids on car, park cars right next to the road like that? If you narrow the road from four lanes to two in bad weather and everything else, that makes it even harder to negotiate. At the same time, the curves serve a function, they slow people down, they have to slow down. I don't think there have been that many accidents, but, but really, that was the two main things against it. I don't see where it's going to make it safer. The curves by themselves slow up traffic, which is one reason people, huh. It's hard to say the speed limit on the north side of Highland Avenue, but on that side you have to. And people are going to see it, they're going to see it anyway. But, uh, I think it's overall safer and better for the traffic flow. You know, like I said, it'd be nice if somebody was looking at lane two, but we've always got sidewalks for that. Anyone who's want to mention that, some topics around, um, track that.
Thanks, Jeff. All right, entertain motion for, uh, move to the chief of law. One second. You'll call.
Mr. Moore. Mr. Beadle. Mr. Beadle. Mr. Johnson. Mr. Johnson.
Hi. Okay, city administration report, ma'am.
Um, I really did not have a lot of updates to, you heard from me a couple of weeks ago. Unless anybody had any questions. I did invite, I could be here to note, we've had some conversation about a lot of the activities that are going on around the city. Debbie, obviously, tells you how you can help it out, make it faster, that's on. Uh, we give you a lot of power to come now. That's offhand, do you, uh, wait, do they still call wait shoes calling in? That was a little bit of a loop there, but anyway, obviously Debbie's involved in a lot of activity going on in the community. So I've asked her to be here, uh, feeding the report to council. And of course Debbie's working with the S F six and Peno, I'm going to say that slowly, so I'll do it directly. And working with a lot of volunteers and she's going to speak together with you. She also obviously works with a lot of economic development, um, concepts. And I think, you know, moving forward, particularly leading in that sphere, we'll probably ask Debbie to come to meetings periodically in the future to provide that update, you know, it'll help keep the residents up to speed, um, at our readings and obviously council will, will bring some insight about some of those activities as well. I think there's already economic development, it's always, um, if, if one says that we need to be a little guarded on occasion because we all here and in the community and sometimes they're very infant stages of developing. So, um, forgive Debbie and me if, if those discussions can't go too far at a particular point in time. There were a lot of tweets, I don't know, I don't know. But, you know, she, she is involved in partnering with people together that have common interest with, uh, you know, business owners or potential businesses that want to come to our community. Building owners, um, who maybe have lease of estates. And a lot of times folks can't, um, fully develop yet and, uh, maybe they're really discussing anything. So, um, she could tell me to get to involve in those. But other than that, um, she, she can put me up there with a lot of the things that are going on. There's a lot of great things going on there with you, so. Unless you have other questions to me, um, or anything else, or if you come back with others, you know, Debbie got her to answer.
The floor is yours.
Well, thank you for inviting me to come. There's probably no better week in the world to ask me to come and update you on the work of Renaissance and economic development than the week of American music. This summer has been very, very busy. Art around town was very successful once again. The numbers spoke pretty well, the success of that special event. I want to publicly thank Sean in Parish Mon, who even though their business left town, they did. They brought dozens of artists and I think everyone in town really appreciated the hard work they put into that event. The summer concert series was probably the most successful we've had over the years, ever since you as a council and, uh, the city put so much into that theater and the work around that park. We've tried to improve things every year a little bit with summer concert series. This year, the special thing we did was bring the same sound equipment every month and sound system, a company that did our sound, so that we had consistent goods, consistently good sound equipment. And we had five different businesses that paid five hundred dollars each. They, they got advertisement out of it, tried to make it work there a while, but they helped pay for that sound system. And we're very grateful to them and we think it showed. We had food trucks for the first time this year. So we had a variety of food. We also had Westick's beer, who paid for, paid handsomely at Westick for sponsorship of the beer and he had exclusive rights. So that is very nice and it showed in the numbers. The farmer's market has probably been the biggest change this year. We've probably moved to ninety, uh, al dender light. Our new, uh, partner is Rob Robinson with Fort Thomas Antique Design Center and he has been a fabulous partner. Every farmer's market that has been successful and has been studied has had a corporate community partner and Rob is known to be just that. He helps pay for some of the things that we do and it shows. One of the things that we've never done before is keep track of our numbers, keep track of the patrons, keep track of the dollar amounts that we have. But this year we started doing that because we had someone on our committee who has done that for job for thirty years at her position at P and G. So she actually sat and went and counted and counted every single patron a penny. And then we asked our vendors to anonymously tell us what their totals were. And I think that it's very common to explain to you that, I swear to you, there has not been a week that on that black tie has been less than a hundred degrees. We also had some weeks where it's been raining. And we had closed things for about an hour. But even with those difficulties, we averaged fourteen hundred people each week. We also averaged seven thousand dollars in sales. Now, over the course of twenty-two weeks, that comes to a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars in sales for farmer's market. That's considered very, very good. Now, Rob's sales at an antique design center for the same four-hour period of time was twenty-five hundred dollars. That's his second highest sales in a week, second on Saturdays. So if you add in that fifty-five thousand dollars in sales over twenty-two weeks, that's another fifty-five thousand dollars. So for that little piece of real estate in Fort Thomas in a four-hour period of time over twenty-two weeks, that's two hundred and nine thousand dollars in sales. That's pretty good economic development. So that little event is bringing a lot of money to Fort Thomas and we're pretty proud. American music is another little event and we're also pretty proud of it. This is the thirteenth year. We have seventy-five vendors signed up. Those seventy-five vendors translate to a lot of businesses in Fort Thomas. We also have a lot of food trucks. Those food trucks have become the standard for our events this year. People here like it. We have some people that you know who come every single week to that farmer's market, to the art around town, to our concerts just to get a meal from our food trucks. So far, we have over forty thousand dollars in sponsorships and fees paid. We're looking forward to some excellent beer, wine and bourbon sales to help grow our pockets. This year's kid zone has surely drawn hundreds of families who want to see princesses and superheroes, cool critters, madcap puppets, loaves and honeycoats. We have edible bubbles and the donkey boots, the donkey boots and prettles. I have brochures here from my take home to your favorite kids and I hope that we're going to see you. Our police and fire departments, our public works and probably everyone here sitting in rooms, you know, here holding in one way or another selling tickets for the year. As for the museum, I have spent a lot of hours to show the kids through that museum. We had every fourth, third year in the city, only three on Friday. We had sixty county kids in the summer on two different dates. Our docents spent weeks putting together the Art of War with our wonderful, uh, posters that were donated, so it's from the B A B a couple of years ago. I've also been working with Big Mark Troy and Sean Baker to put together the Norton Hensett carriage tour on October ninth. We're having forty-six week people coming through four different sites here in the city. One of my favorite things to do is bring new businesses to the city. And Eighteen North has been one of the most successful ventures I've ever worked on and I am so thrilled with change, the change that is happening in that building. Dan Morgan is being congratulated by everyone in town. It is one hundred percent occupied now. And the businesses that are in there, the dollar dance, men to women, office buildings, early retail and office space. We have three offices and, uh, you know, there's still some of the same old businesses that were already in there and they're still thriving. And I once said that that was the cornerstone building in Central Business District. And I believe that today, if you look at the numbers of people in and out of those businesses, take a look on Saturday morning at Popis Billings and you'll be as well. Other economic development project is Sages Project, it's still a work in progress. I continue to work for engineers, we are being potential developers, being potential businesses and we hope to have that one settled in there in the future. Due to the success of Eighteen North, we have two other projects also in works. I have a steady stream of businesses that are asking to come to Fort Thomas because. I have a steady stream of businesses that are asking to come to Fort Thomas because of the retail trends that they see here. In twenty twelve, I accepted the position of Economic Development Director. And on that very first stage of developing, I began with the hotel development. Because I really had this vision of bringing military reunions to the city. I felt like the town park is the perfect spot to bring military reunions. I talked to the Kentucky tourism folks and quite frankly, they didn't want to bring one here because we were going to have a hotel close to that. So I began courting, um, various, you know, groups who bought hotels, talked a lot to them. And they were all very cordial. They loved the site. They loved the two seventy-five corridor. They love four seventy-one. They love four and a half minutes from downtown Cincinnati. They loved our entrance ring or exit ring. But it wasn't quite the right time. And just a few months ago, I met with premier franchise partners and talked to them about Fort Thomas. Showed them the site that I thought was really good, you know? They loved it. And a month or so later, they came back with some drawings and everything that I had asked for, they brought back to me. We met another time with some volunteers and we met with the mayor and with Lon. And they also were impressed and we met with our journey folks. And I'm starting working through the zoning process. So tonight we'll be going on the I P A of Fort Thomas. We're in the beginning stages and we hope over the course of the next few months that we'll bring that hotel to reality. I look forward to the idea of a facility to host our families, our friends, military reunions, and other great community events. Beginning in May of this year, I began monthly meetings with seven different committees. Uh, so a lot of committee meetings, a lot of meetings taken up, it's especially today. People, every committee meetings and people for twenty seventeen. We have nearly fifty folks, some of the best from Fort Thomas. They are passionate, hardworking, they're excited, and they can't wait to have a party. Our hardest goal is coming up with a theme every single month. We sweat bullets for this one. Lon and I had had a discussion about the branding for the city and he was just as passionate about the need for that as we were about the need for a theme for our hundred and fiftieth birthday. So over the months, we feel worried. We've seen, we put it out on Facebook asking for suggestions. Well, two weeks ago, it finally came. I hope you'll hear this, let it sink in a minute. Fort Thomas, community is our business. I want you to think about how that sounds and what it means to you. After it was read out loud to us, everyone at that meeting got beat. That was it. When you think about those words, it makes sense. Everything we do in the city is about community. Our schools, our events, our parks, our street skates, our sports, our art. Fort Thomas is about community. Community is our business. When I told Lon what we had come up with, it's based with, uh, perhaps our branding will come from our hundred and fiftieth birthday celebration. Our, our committees are working hard. Our Farmer's Ford Dinner on Sunday is going to be fabulous. Courtney Shannon is the chair. Colonel Dean and his crew of chefs are planning the meeting. We're going to have a youth choir singing under the auspices of Mary, um, Scat. We'll be uncorking Jim Bean bourbon in honor of Fort Thomas that evening. And we'll be honoring some of their very special folks as well. On Tuesday and then throughout that week, the Cobra Rye murder mystery will be told and retold in French Theater. Caroline Stone is saying that. We're working with a great sculptor to bring General Thomas to Fort Thomas for the first time. Bob Pyle heads that committee. We are planning a fundraiser dinner in November and we'll be receiving more details on that very soon. Our hope is that the statue will be fully funded. It's not probable that the statue will be unveiled in twenty seventeen, but we will be able to show them on that. We hope to have two very fine concerts during that week. More details on that will come as well. We're working on that. The Special Events Committee under the auspices of Margaret Sloan has an entire array of events developed for that week. There's something for everyone to handle. Gentlemen, plan to wear your mustache and beard if you haven't already got one. Kids, plan to decorate your bikes. Everyone needs to plan for those races. Yes, Mayor. Ain't nothing like that, Lord. We had our photography contest. It's going to be a lot of gold fashion fun. The Y M C A is helping with the planning as well. And of course, the Fourth of July is in the middle of festivals, so we'll celebrate the Independence Day as well. The History Committee is doing some extra special high-tech historical events around the city. Somehow that sound weird. Historical high-tech. That's Chuck Keller and his team. Families are going to be able to showcase their own photo family trees. Students from our schools are involved in Fort Thomas Historical Time Line. And this group is going to wow everyone. We're awaiting an answer on our share base. We have lots of fundraisers going on, but we still need to find out who the state is going to be able to build this much anticipated stairs to the top of town. We hoped to make foreign zip line, but we didn't have enough longers for that. We have a marketing committee that is just getting started who will help us break the limits to the public just after the first of the year. We hope to do that in a good way, everything, everything is a thesis. Which never dulls my job. I just began today my eleventh year. I love it every day when someone emails me or calls me and asks me to have coffee because I don't see if they can volunteer. Or maybe they have a new business idea. Maybe they want to rent a new space or purchase a building for their business. I often say that I'm a matchmaker. There's no price. I'm going to match you. You do me.
Yeah, yeah, excellent, excellent. How many? Excellent. So questions?
Yes.
Comments?
Sessors and tenured, what will we give around the Fourth of July when it begins and enjoy us for?
It's July the second, three.
Second, three.
Wonderful. That's why there's a lot of activities. Could be a lot of been there, move, start in there.
Yeah.
Okay. But that'll be a moon plus, uh, a lot of active participation.
Community is our business, is that shit in stone? We're done talking about, I just, variations on community.
Don't you mess with our.
City or community, Matt.
So when that, that's the, uh, for the Sessors and Tenured, that's the, uh, very true.
I hope so.
I think that's just a whole.
Uh, I mean, no, I think that's just, I mean, that's the, that's the, meaning for the, for the event, yeah.
If we want to make it a broader thing that covers the city, we can do that. Yeah, I think that's awesome. And everything set for Saturday? Um. The weather's supposed to be good?
Yeah.
That's awesome. Question, um, Wes X still has the exclusive on the beer, right? Okay.
For this year next, they paid a hefty premium for that exclusive. Just so you know, we opened that up for bid with other places as well. And, uh, they, they doubled the next closest bid in order to do that.
Wow, that's good.
And we get to meet the cost, so.
Yeah. And they, they drew a life here last time, didn't they? And then next year they have a life here, that's it.
Is that right? They're meeting the likes of that.
Yes, yes. But they're looking for a north Kentucky, um, home as well. There's a Jim Bean booth.
Jim Bean, Jim Bean. Norwegian?
I mean, it's more of, more of a.
There's going to be a tent and a booth. So come for your bourbon here.
Different tickets, I bet you got different.
No, you got, we got a ticket, a five dollar ticket and you can get neither or. We also have one, three liners. A whole lot.
That's so cool.
That's one of the biggest guys.
Debbie, that was wonderful. Thank you so much for bringing us all up to speed on what's going on. Sounds like there's a lot of people doing a lot of stuff. And that is, that is clearly really exciting, really interesting. Anybody else have any other questions today or for the line? All right, we'll move on to, um, community business. Finance com- committee report and expectation.
Your quarter was posted on September seventh through nineteenth, two thousand sixteen. General fund sixty million nine hundred eighty-five dollars and seventy-seven cents. All the warrants paid out by forty thousand five hundred eighty-eight dollars and thirty more cents. C D B in violation of hundred thousand ninety-seven dollars and eighty-six cents. Total one hundred one thousand six hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-four cents. We need other side numbers in the planning committee recommend the warrants number three oh two six oh five. We adhere to six seven hundred three thirty and the pressure of the authorized tuition checks will be made as from the left checkup.
You want to take a motion?
No, I don't think so.
Do you think?
Sure.
Go public, please.
Mr. Roddick?
Hi.
Mr. Beazel?
Hi.
Mr. Green?
Uh, Mr. Thompson?
Hi.
All right, down to ordinance, uh, to the ordinance, expect him out to the G C zone, going to motion.
With the summary of ordinance number oh ten, two thousand sixteen. The ordinance accepting the recommendation of Fort Thomas Planning Commission's Amendment to its Resolution Number Z oh one, two thousand sixteen. An amendment for additional ordinance of the city of Fort Thomas, Kansas, Kentucky, being the ordinance number oh sixteen, two thousand seven. To include a hotel as a listed permit permitted use on a general commercial zone under Article ten Z regulations. Section ten point one two, general commercial zone, subsection A, uses permitted. The planning commission concluded, conducted a public hearing on August seventeenth, two thousand sixteen to consider an amendment to the text of section ten point one two A, Z regulations to allow hotel as a permitted use within a general commercial zone. The commission found that hotel for finalized permitted uses in the general commercial zone and recommends that the tax in the zoning ordinance be amended. Section ten point one two A of the Fort Thomas zoning ordinance be amended to include a hotel as a permitted use within a general commercial zone.
All right, you want to take a motion? Wait for it. For a second?
Sir.
You need a session? Go public, please.
Mr. Roddick?
Hi.
Mr. Beazel?
Hi.
Mr. Beazel?
Hi.
Mr. Thompson?
Hi.
Mr. Thompson?
Hi.
Oh, thank you. I want to tell them.
This is the summary of the ordinance, uh, oh, two thousand sixteen. The ordinance providing for the imposition, levy collection, and portion of the taxes of the city of Fort Thomas, Kevin Fleming, and Ricky, three, zero, two thousand sixteen, and fixing their rights. For two thousand and sixteen, there is some taxes taxes of the city of San Antonio, point four zero two upon each one hundred dollar valuation of real property, point four zero two upon each one hundred valuation of personal property and mixed property. And point three nine seven one upon each one hundred dollar valuation of other vehicles subject to taxation within the city limits. And point four zero two upon each one hundred dollar valuation of our franchise valuations reused for the planning of car and incidental expenses of city government. The taxes shall be due and available at the city building for P I O P six three nine oh one five. Cincinnati applying four five two six thirty on the date of the ordinance. It comes effective. All bills not paid or closed by February thirty first, two thousand sixteen, shall be delinquent on a penalty of five percent of the amount of the federal bill shall be added. The city treasurer shall collect the bills with a five percent penalty added and interest at the rate of eight percent per annum until paid on the amount of the tax and waste fee. The city clerk shall add an additional penalty of ten percent of the amount of the unpaid federal bill on January first, two thousand seventeen. The city treasurer shall then proceed to collect the bills with a total penalty of fifteen percent and interest from the number first, two thousand sixteen. When the amendment of the delinquent tax bill is reported from the city attorney for collection, legal action will be initiated into collect the delinquent tax interest and penalty levy thereof and the cost and fees associated with it. The city of Fort Thomas has a lien upon the property assessed for a tax and waste fees and all penalties, interest, fees, commissions, charges, and other expenses including court costs and other penalties.
Do you want to take a motion? Can I call those, please?
Mr. Roddick?
Hi.
Mr. Beazel?
I could plug in on late, or I'm going to be in there, but the beginning is about to be assessed for times next year. Um, and the median household, our house price is jumping close to thirty thousand. So I think we've got a book and tax increase that's coming down by anyway. Um, that being, okay, aside, I need to, you know, fiscal account, that's, um, Kentucky law takes into account changes in property values, up or down. So to the extent that value is so high, the rate would be lower so that the total increase revenue would be four percent. So that's already taken into account in form of the reassessment. So this is the rate for this year. If, if there is a revision for next year and then that would cause, you know, revenues to go beyond, um, you know, what we've been proven to receive, then automatically, not automatically, but I mean essentially by formula, then for next year's rate, the, the, the rate would be reduced so it doesn't, um, generate more revenue, uh, than the four percent that's committed by law.
True, that could make it, um.
Tax rate may go down and if, if you're thinking that the, uh.
Yeah, I'm thinking that, I mean, I, I would love to be assessed on a few of them for, and, um, and I just, it's, I'm over set with this percentage. So you're saying the state law would dictate that the property values went up to such a point that we had more than four percent revenue increase? That would, right, that, that would explain.
Yeah, it's, it's very complicated. That's exactly what, that's exactly what happens when the tax rate has to go down so that the city doesn't take in more than four percent. But in end, if it's taxed, rate can actually drop. Sorry, Rob.
Yeah, just, I mean, because this question comes up quite often in my profession and I, you know, a lot of discussion on tax here and so on. And so I think here's easy to sort of understand that if your property values go up by four percent, your, your tax rate would have to stay, stay the same because just the increase in valuation will be four percent. Um, you know, conversely, if they didn't go up at all, your rate could go up to generate four more, four percent more in revenue. So the two factors work together. So, and those have to happen. The easiest example to understand is the four percent because that's what the statute provides. And it goes above four percent, which happened for several years, uh, at one time when inflation rates were high. The tax rates kept going down, uh, so that the, uh, revenues were limited, you know, by the statute. So, so the statutes already take that into account that your revenues want to go up. Yeah, well, revenue would be appropriate in the general.
That's a good point. I just, I still was damned with my book, um, knowing that even if the rates were reduced, I'm expecting an exponentially, you know, huge reduction. I, I mean, the increase in property values only increases, I, I realize that I see what the prices are going to be. So I think that we're still going to be fine even if the rates do not change. So I was just.
Mr. Beazel?
Hi.
Mr. Beazel?
Um, I, I'd like to make, you know.
Um, I, I'd like to make, you know, just a little further comment along those lines. Um, first of all, just at the regular level, um, Kentucky, you know, by all purposes, is, is a very low property tax state, you know, relative to other states around the country. Our revenue comes from a few primary sources, uh, the, uh, property tax, the, uh, occupational licensing, the local tax, if you wanna call it, and insurance premium tax. The one thing about the property tax is that a lot of services we provide primarily benefit property owners, particularly public safety. Um, and so I would suggest that it's a fair tax in that way because property owners, they're large part of benefit, uh, from that tax. But the benefits we give to the revenue, this report from Debbie was, you know, just a phenomenal report. But it's because of some, some tax revenues that were generated that we were able to hire somebody like Debbie, and, and, and also provide some of the amendments that, uh, I think people have been around a lot of appreciate, but, you know, hopefully don't take them, then take, take for granted, like, again, what Debbie mentioned, the amphitheater, or something like that, be a catalyst to generate. We were talking about this in the meeting earlier, and then Debbie mentioned several examples of how we can take a very small amount of tax revenue and, and leverage that into a lot of private contributions. Forty thousand dollars just for a single event, not to mention several, um, what are now publicly owned improvements that were done by, uh, folks around town. You know, big community supporters at, at, at some of our parks. And so, and people had bought park benches that, that, um, well, I'd say park benches, I mean, public benches that are all over town, um, because of what was done for, um, you know, the Lance Bishop process that we went through. So, um, uh, so, you know, for those reasons, because of the values community, what this means, and, and, and I would suggest that, uh, one of the reasons, and it's not just for the city, but it's the schools as well, one of the reasons is property values going up like this. It's because of the investment that we're making in public funds in this community that everybody has a part of. Um, so, uh, so because it's fair, uh, because again, it probably takes a very easy collect, very sound, it's a very sound source of revenue, unlike, for example, insurance premium tax, which is unfair, and also very unpredictable. But it's something that the county has adopted. If we don't adopt it, if we don't take it, it's not gonna go to the city, so we might as well do it. Uh, and, you know, so unlike some of these other taxes, uh, I think it's a very, very appropriate tax, and that's why I think, uh, we should take the statute totally amended, uh, amount, which I'm sure will even cover our recent costs in next year. That's four, forty percent, increasing four percent of one-third of our revenue is not gonna, you know, cover inflation and, uh, decrease pension costs and, and so on, healthcare costs that, you know, everybody just pays for themselves. As long as we say, uh.
Mr. Thompson.
Hi.
Any remarks to come before council? If not, meaning in the interim, that's all.